Her sign says moved in.
Now you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Chief, Council President Chief, Counselor Franken.
Here.
Counselor Conrad.
Here.
Counselor Martine.
Here.
Here.
And Mayor McNeely is present. Workshops are intended to allow for preliminary discussions by the city council and staff. Workshops are held to present information to the council. So that the council is prepared for upcoming regular meetings. Workshops are subject to Oregon's public meeting law and must be noticed accordingly. No final city council decisions are made during workshops. The public is encouraged to attend workshops but may not participate unless expressly asked. So we're going to begin with a presentation from Nan Devlin, Director of Tullamook Coast Visitors Association. So Nan, welcome and take it away.
Yeah, thank you for inviting me. Just, I'll just start out with the grants, the facilities, the facade improvement grants and the marketing grant all went live on March first. We've already had a lot of questions from people calling and asking about what might qualify and all these things. So that's been really good and I hope we'll have a really good response to this. And as with the new software program that we implemented this year or last fall. And this will be the first time that Rockaway businesses will be in that system. But it's pretty intuitive to get in, so. Step by step. So we did pass out flyers to all the businesses. And I sent, and I think the city sent emails to all the businesses. And there were several of the businesses that had applied for our marketing grant. And we ran out of money. So I called them, I emailed them and sent them the flyer and a link to go in and do our, your Rockaway Beach grant. Some of them did get, so I did get some grants, but not everybody. So anyway, today, I was asked to talk about a couple of things. One is ideas for off-season activities. And the other is for suggested workforce and tourism training workshops.
Oh, because I, I didn't realize we were finished with this, could, may I say something?
Yeah.
I, I've also gone around and talked to businesses that have, that have not previously applied. And to see if they understood how to apply. And I got a lot of feedback from people saying the reason they haven't applied is because they don't have the twenty thousand dollars up cash upfront, for cash upfront. And I've mentioned this to City Manager Shepherd too. So what kind of accommodations are we making?
This time in this, this round. You, all you, for the facilities grant, Mrs. Especially.
That you were meaning the facade grant?
The, I'm sorry, yeah, I keep mixing it up with the other one.
Oh.
We do, yeah, the facade improvement grant. They get, let's say they get awarded thirty thousand dollars or twenty thousand or whatever. And if they get a consigned contract, they can get, and they send that in, then we approve it. They'll get half of their money that they are awarded. So if they get thirty thousand dollar grant, they'll get fifteen thousand dollars that will help them pay for those initial costs. And then they get the rest of the money when they finish the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's pretty much what people have been telling me they want, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and these are all mom and pop businesses, you know, and they.
Yeah. Some of them said they would have had to go out and take out a loan in order to, to do this.
Right.
And then when they paid the loan back, they've got to pay back interest, you know, so it just was a, not a good situation for them, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Or whoever was.
So let's, I'll talk about, and these are just some things that we can easily do and, and easily partner with here with some organizations. But are, we have an event person on our staff, she is on vacation. And she'll be back next week, so I'll brainstorm some more ideas with her. But the first thing is one that we do have planned and is going to involve Rockaway businesses. And this, we were going to put on two, I'll just back up. In twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, right after we launched the North Coast Food Trail. We did a Crave the Coast event. We also did a beer and cheese event, beer and cheese pairing event, which was wonderful. And it was a, it was a fundraiser for food routes. But the Crave the Coast event was just to really open up the public to what, who was on the North Coast Food Trail. It was wildly successful, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then twenty twenty came along and everything was canceled. We've tried to get it going before, I mean since. And we were going to do it this year in September, again, it's in the tent in Garibaldi. But to be a vendor, and you have food. The fee, the county fee to be a vendor in a, in an event went from one hundred dollars to two hundred fifty dollars per vendor. So right away, they're two hundred and fifty dollars in the pool. Now they sell their products and everything. But most of them are mom and pop restaurants, and if they're working that event, they have to close their business. So not only are they out the two hundred and fifty, but they're also out a whole day's worth of business. So we decided instead, and we got a Travel Oregon grant to do this, and we're waiting for the okay to change this from a one-day festival to a month-long food event. And it'll be the whole county, and we're going to work with each restaurant, not only on the food trail, but others too, where they do a Crave the Coast menu item, or Crave the Coast beverage item, or tastings or something that they do that month to bring in people. And October is a great month to bring people in. Weather hasn't changed, it's always still very beautiful. So we're going to do that this year.
Will food carts be able to participate also?
Yes, absolutely. The other thing that used to happen in Pacific City and hasn't happened, it got mismanaged down there, is a birding event. And the thing about birders is that they have a lot of money and they stay a long time till they find that one bird. And if, if, they're very well-known about that, they have higher incomes. And we could be, some of the tours or some of the places to take people to see birds can be led by a birding expert. And there are people here that do that. And also the, we have a partnership with the Bird Alliance, which used to be the Audubon Society in Portland. And they could do that. And Pacific City did it for years, it was called the Birding and Blues. And they combined it with birding during the day and music and food at night. One issue here would be where do you hold that nighttime event? What place is large enough to have a music and?
What time of year is it?
Uh, they're supposed in fall.
So we have a music festival, we had it last year for the first time, it was in September, but this year it's going to be in August. Our cultural nonprofit in camp.
Yeah.
At the wayside. If you're just looking at Rockaway, is that a possibility to maybe? I haven't even spoken to them to see if they're interested, but I am on the board, so I have one vote. But, but it, but if it, if they are interested in combining it, would it be something you would be interested in?
We could, we could do that, we could do that, but I, I was actually kind of disappointed. Well, I know if it's an outdoor music festival, you've got to count on the weather. So I understand them moving it to August. But if there's a place near here, or even a school, high school.
Okay.
Where they would allow to have a concert and, you know, food. Uh, it could work, I don't know if they would though.
The, the birds, you know, there is some fluctuation due to season, but it's phenomenal, at least. Not, maybe not up on the hill, but by the lake and stuff, it's wild.
I, I think we might have, in camp might have enough money this year to put up a huge tent if it's outdoors. But the high school, so there wouldn't be alcohol served, is that?
Is that good?
There would be no alcohol served.
Not at the school.
Yeah, that's what I was checking.
Yeah, not at the school. And, and it would be nice to have.
Yeah.
Beer and wine available.
Such a big draw to these.
Yeah.
Events.
Yeah.
What about the, well, there's the rental space in Garibaldi, which I know isn't directly, but it's still, you could still have, it's not that far. And then there's also the, the old, what's the restaurant that's empty right now and it's so huge? I don't know if that's available for rent at all, if they even consider such a thing, but.
Which, which restaurant do you?
The Beach Bite.
The Beach Bite, yeah, just a thought.
Oh.
Um, but the idea, and I understand what you're saying, but I think the idea is to get beyond August and have a draw that's.
And they might have a buyer before then.
Oh.
I don't know, how big does this space need to be?
Well, Birding and Blues, interestingly, they limited their birding guests to ninety. So only, and those people stayed, you know, three or four nights. Um, but the Blues Festival, music was like three hundred people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what the possibility of putting, I mean, getting permission to use the wayside in October, there's no restricted dates then. Putting up a big tent with indoor heaters and doing it at the wayside.
You could.
Could, could create an, an indoor event outdoors.
Well, I was just sitting there thinking of the fire department, they used to do the big concerts down there. We, we know, we know a person or two that's helped with that.
Ah.
Nancy Albro might know some.
I mean, you're nicer than me, I wasn't going to throw her name out.
But I think that, that for Rockaway Beach, that's probably the best alternative.
Okay.
I don't know what the cost of a big tent that's weatherproof and.
Nancy Albro is going to be your, probably your best point of contact on that, because she was kind of the.
The instigator.
The big kahuna on it, but.
So the other is the Rockaway Beach Resort, they have a conference room, but I don't, it won't accommodate three hundred people.
No.
That's what I was reading then.
They're supposed to be adding a, a elevator, but I guess they haven't gotten it yet.
I think they're going to apply for this facade improvement grant, which has accessibility.
Okay.
So I, I would like to keep the door open to work within camp and own, and, and, and we have reserved the wayside for August. But there's, if the, all the conditions are right, it could be moved. Because we would bring in all the music and, and people wouldn't have to. We had fabulous bands, some local bands, some from Portland last year. And.
Good.
A, and, and we set up, we brought in the food carts and all of that kind of stuff, so.
Good.
So just keep that conversation open and, and see if, if you could need the, the assistance of having experienced people bring in the bands and stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think partnering with M Cam, we just need to make sure it happens in October, not August.
Yeah, we, we just, we just picked August because we thought the weather would be good, and there's no great reason for it.
And that's, you know, completely understandable to do that. The other thing, I, I have to figure this, number three is partner with like Kelly's Brighton Marina. You stay in, you stay in your hotel in October, you get a gift certificate to go learn to clan, have lunch there, things like that. Very small, you just want on, you know, one, sometimes these things work and sometimes they don't. I remember, was it three years ago, we did a contest here, I think, to have people stay, they would get a week, they'd sign up for the newsletter. You could come and get two nights stay plus a dining card. And all the people that won, although there were four winners and only one responded. And we, okay, we're going to give you till Friday to respond, and then we'll go to somebody else. I, I don't know what, what that's about, it's really strange. But it's, it's something that people could, maybe they wouldn't think of doing, that they could go do.
I think it'd be really popular. Um, just, just judging by how busy the crabbing docks are in Garibaldi.
Yeah, oh yes.
Crabbing's year round.
Yeah.
Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're not, but.
Another thing that we've noticed on Facebook is that photography in Rockaway Beach is so popular. Um, we have a, a fellow Trent Wilson, who's a police officer in Tullamook, for City of Tullamook. We, he contracts with us, you know, to do reels. And it's all outdoor, and the ones that get the highest, highest engagement are the ones from Rockaway. I mean, thousands of people, hundreds of shares, people love Rockaway. So without, could we do a photography weekend and have people, photographers, you know, train people to take really great photos or videos? We could get a videographer who could help. Um, and then do maybe, we do, you, some sort of contests where they can show, it'd be on a screen or we'd have, because unless we had printing capabilities. And have them somewhere in, in an event, maybe a restaurant, larger restaurant, you put things, you've, and give out prizes or whatever. But that might be something. Yeah. Um, walking tour weekends, and this would, might be good, like from, you know, from May and September, which is kind of not quite shoulder season. But we can train people to do walking tours, I used to do walking tours in Portland. And we have a lot of certified interpretive guides here in the county who can train people to do some walking tours and have it be advertised at the hotels and the STRs. And you could even, I don't know, make it a donation thing to some organization. You know, five dollars or something, just something funded.
Scott Fisher is very interested in a historical walking tour.
Oh, okay.
So we can put you in touch with him.
Yeah.
And those of, those of you who have lived here for a while know all of this, but I learned it by canvassing, you know, the, the, the buildings have been different things. Of course, our, our park is sitting on top of where the bowling alley was, we all hear about the natatorium. So there's just, and there's, and there's reams of historical pictures that are available, so, you know. I think the potential for that is, is, uh, is, is, it's a real possibility, it could be something.
Just to add to this, and this is something that actually happened at Camp Recruiter, because a friend of mine went to it, it was a whole mushroom, mushroom event.
Yes.
And they went wild, like my, my friend had a bullet the size of her head, you know. And it's like, it was really fun and they learned a lot and, and they even sent them off to go, to go find stuff and bring it back and things like that.
I actually just looked for a mushroom, because I think the library sometimes has them.
Well, Explore Nature does, you know who, Explore Nature is a, a program that does all kinds of outdoor and natural history events and nature events. And there is run by Tullamook Estuaries Partnership. And they do frequently, they do foraging events, and they're sold out every time. Yeah. So that would be a great.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I have a, I don't know how open he'd be, but I have a, a neighbor who's, I don't know if he's eighteen yet, but he, he's an expert, like I asked him some questions in the middle of the road and he just.
Cool.
He just sounded like I've never heard him speak so much. His parents said, yeah, the adder gaming and you got him.
And one time, I know that Explore Nature did the foraging event, and then they went to a restaurant and the chef made dishes with the mushrooms that they had found that day.
Yeah.
So it could, it could be a really popular one that you could repeat.
They do it in Shempood State Park and things like that.
Yeah.
Are you, with this, are you, are you envisioning maybe throughout the weekend, more than one walking tour?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, like one in town, like Mayor Rusain, and then one in the boardwalk. And then maybe a more rigorous one for people who want, who would want to go up the logging roads at, at the end of Third Street.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, and, and number six is really, you know, we just talked about this, the hotel restaurant promotions, and it was iffy. And we did a lot of promotion on that, and we got a lot of response. And, and like I said, the winners never responded. We were like, you, you just got a free weekend and some meals and.
They never showed up?
And they never showed up and they never responded and we kept saying to them, I, I don't know, we kept saying.
We just had an event.
Please let me know.
And we had fifty gift baskets, and I still have probably ten of them. And we haven't heard one word.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy to me.
Um, and then, you know, we have Rockaway Beach Resort, I don't, I don't know what they're doing for sales. They wanted us to do their sales and we kept doing that. So it's small conferences, fifty people. But we could, you know, find some way to do some sales outreach uh, to the Portland metro area, and I thought that they started that, but I haven't heard anything from them.
You talked about still the Rockaway Beach Resort?
Yeah.
I saw, I, I, I talked with him briefly at the jet today.
Yeah.
And he said he has partnered with Swifels that has the, the flower garden and does.
Oh, Patrick Swifle?
Yeah, couldn't think of his first name, uh, to do some venue, joint venues there.
He may have, I know he's talked to a lot of people. Yeah, I think I introduced him to them, but anyway. These are just some of the top-line things, and, and like I said, when my event person gets back next week, we'll do, we'll do some more ideas, but these would happen.
Have you guys ever thought about doing like the glass float like Lincoln City does?
Yeah. But it's not just Lincoln City, it's like Cannon Beach is doing it now and.
I just see Lincoln City's just pops up so.
They've done it a lot.
They do it, they do it all the time.
They started.
But people, that's one of the things that I get asked a lot, is, is there a place that you can do glass floats here in Rockaway? And there used to be, or is it now?
Yeah, that guy, the, the business that was here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, but I just thought, people go crazy for glass float, I mean, maybe that would be a good, you know, winter time.
We'd have to think about where you would.
And King's.
King Town, yeah, you'd have to be aware of types, but.
Fifty first.
You know, or maybe they're not, maybe they're not on the beach beach, maybe they're in town, maybe, you know, I don't know, I just, people go crazy for glass floats, I don't know.
The other thing they go crazy for too is like, is kind of like glass floats, geocaching.
Mm-hmm.
And if you could turn the town, do you?
Yeah, we, we, we've done a lot of it too.
You could, you could turn the town into a major geocaching.
That would be so cool.
I mean, that would be much easier to do.
Locals that paint rocks and hide them all over town.
Yes, they do.
With the jetty and all, you want them.
Yeah. And have some, you know, all, there's a geocache expert here in the county that I could find out, remember his name and see what he'd say.
Years ago, I think, oh eight or oh nine, something like that, the, the railroad got all the mayors and city councillors in the whole county. And left from Garibaldi and went all the way up to Wheeler. And they had people in there that, the historians of the area. And we tell, give a talk to everybody and you walk around inside the train, and that was a nice function, you know.
It is, and I, I thought about talking to the railroad and see if they would do some special excursions.
Because it would be good advertising for them too.
Yeah, well, definitely, especially in the off-season, because they, they do shut down for a couple, three months, at Christmas to, to spring break.
Yeah.
But they do have to get a track inspection whenever they do go someplace, so.
Yeah.
If it's off-season for them, they might not be able to do it.
I'll talk to them.
That's worth a phone call.
That's a good idea. So, anyway, just initial thoughts.
Good.
You know, this is what we need, our, we need, we need people in the businesses, not just in July, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. By the way, I just got the county T L T numbers today finally for, for Q four twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty four was up, uh, over twenty twenty three.
Whoa, that surprises me.
I know.
And people were cooking in their rooms and staying in their rooms.
I know, it, it's.
When I, when I, I talked to businesses and when some of the restaurant sides, people were splitting meals. So their ticket, their average tickets were down. People were coming into the restaurant, they just weren't spending as much money. People were in town, but they weren't, they weren't, they didn't have the discretionary, because of inflation and other things, so they were. So we had the bodies, and to your point, they probably did more meals if they were staying in an SDR, certain rental, they're, they're just cooking at home.
Yeah, I was, you know, I had been up all, there was only one, I think it was spring when we had really bad weather. March or something last year, that was down a little bit, like Q two to Q two. But summer was up, Q one was way up, uh, Q three was up, and now Q four is up. And, and even the gross lodging revenues were up, as well as the T L T, which tells me that they're maybe charging more. Because I've heard, I keep hearing from S T R agencies and, oh, our occupancy is way down, but the numbers are up. So they must be charging more.
All the motels are going up. Place we like to go to in Astoria, usually a hundred and a quarter a night, now they want two fifty a night, whoa. Weekly going there, of course.
Yeah.
Nan, so, uh, uh, we're talking shoulder seasons, which is really good and more optimal. You know, when I think about the winter, the winter is tough for a couple of reasons. Can't get people, you can't get people over the coast a lot of times, so you plan an event and then suddenly there's something that happens and snow falls and people won't come over. Do you ever consider advertising north and south and pulling people from the south of us and from the north of us?
Yes.
Into Rockaway Beach, because even if the coast range is difficult, people can typically get up and down the one-on-one
Yes.
to come up for an event, so I wouldn't throw out potentially something in January, February. Or, uh, it's some type of event, but, but targeted not, I mean, we would welcome the people from Portland, but we, we would really focus on drawing people from the north and the south of us to sustain it.
K T I L, the local radio, they now expand all the way down to Florence. They partnered with another radio station and now their programs reach all the way to Florence and they also all, all the way up to Astoria. So we're looking at what kind of package they might have to do that, and I, I love the idea of, of that winter. Yeah.
I think something around King Tides would be interesting. I had people that I know from the valley, uh, come and stay with me just so they could go look at the King Tides.
Yeah.
And when we went to the beach, you know, full of people looking, watching the King Tides.
We did that on social media on Rockaway Beach this year.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, we said it's King Tides, watch, get yourself a oceanfront room and watch, you know. Yeah, because it is amazing, it's amazing time.
As retired fireman, I hated the King. You see the condos, you look down there, a big wave would come forward the highway. And soon as it receded, all the people ran down the beach, you know, like, stupid.
Gosh.
And you started going to the fire station, said you was going to have to round them up.
My gosh.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and please, any other ideas you have, please send them my way. You know, I often think of things at three o'clock in the morning, you do the same, so. So, and then for suggested workforce and tourism training workshops. So there is a program, there's a statewide organization called Reinventing Rural. And they have a program that is a national program called Co-Starters, they're the ones who operated in the state. And Co-Starters is for businesses, either people have an idea for a business and they just need to go through the process of making a a, a, a good decision about it, or it's for, or businesses that are already in existence and they're thinking, how do I grow? How do we go forward and grow my business? And we conducted one in, they used to be ten weeks long. That's a big commitment for people, especially if you're owning a business. So we do this bootcamp thing and it's for, um, four things, four sessions. And these are, can be all free, we did them because we had some leftover grant money, so. And we're doing one in, at N C R D, actually, in April.
Yeah, we are.
So it's called Co-Starters and I, I took it, and it's, and it's great. But you, it could be held here, you know, it could be held in someplace, we could even do it in a, in a restaurant. In, in a, if they have a banquet room or something, they, they did one at the Pelican Brewing. And, but it's like the first, you know, the first class is you dive into your business idea, is there a demand for what you want to do? Uh, promote, like who's your customer, what brand message? Uh, promote, like who's your customer? What brand message should you have to reach that customer? Build, is understanding costs of business, is this actually going to be feasible or is this gonna be an expensive hobby? And then launch, set your priorities, your thirty, sixty, ninety day plans to launch types of business licenses you're going to need. And people come up with a really good plan at the end of this. And I, I think it could be good for people here, especially if you've got a couple new businesses and. Um, and some maybe that would like to grow.
And, and we have available space for new businesses, closed up buildings.
Yes. Who's, oh, the, this distillery, I mean Spirits of the West is opening here. Did you hear about that?
We're moving into the old, uh, Oak Chest building.
I think, oh, oh, yeah. Good, yeah, they were in the Harlem for a couple, three years and then they moved out.
So it's actually gonna happen. I happened to canvass the guy. I was out knocking on doors and he on the Q T told me he was negotiating for that building, I don't know. He wanted to bring the distillery here, so.
He, he announced on Facebook.
Awesome, oh, that's very cool.
Spirits of the West, yeah.
Yeah, I know he's been in talks with, uh, Dan, our public work superintendent about, uh. Logistics and been, been, uh, affluent from the, the distillery, so.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
I'll be cool.
Is it big enough?
Yeah, it's, it's a, his last place is, um, not very big. I mean, I never saw the back, but the. The front room was pretty small.
Yeah.
Um.
Hmm, yeah, little tasting bar, if I remember correctly.
Five bucks.
That'll be fun.
Yeah.
Not that Council of Franklin went there very often. Only when guests came in.
Because we had the same hour, so I never got to go.
Oh, yeah.
And when I went, it was his like last week. But I knew about him, he actually, yeah.
Well, excited it's coming to fruition, I think it's gonna be a nice addition to.
Me too. Grant writing, now we did a grant writing class before, and I think it was o- over the marketing grant.
Mm-hmm.
But there are a lot of, hopefully there will continue to be a lot of grants out there that businesses can apply for or. Nonprofits can apply for, you know, things, so we could do a grant writing class. And we could time it maybe with the next.
Could, could I add on to that, not only grant writing, but how to find grants?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, as I've gone around town talking about our grants, I, I. That's probably next to how do I afford the thirty thousand dollar grant. The next biggest question is. Mary, will you help me write the grant? And I, I know, that's like, no, I'm one of the judges, so I can't do that.
Yeah.
Uh, so I know there's a big need for it.
Yeah, good, yeah, I help people write grants a lot as well. Um, another thing is because there are so many changes on Facebook. And trying to make sense of Meta or Meta or wherever, however they call it. Drives me nuts, and. If it started being us, I know it's gonna drive other people nuts, but how to do this? And so, so we have somebody who's an expert in social media marketing that is going to do some. Um, videos and, and they'll also come into an onsite thing. Um, she's quite good and, and, um, so. We're hoping to do, and it could even do it for businesses, or you could do it for nonprofits, or you could do, you know, you could specialize in. And we can also do a webinar and put it on the website so people can use it later.
And maybe they could reach out to. Different times of social media that maybe younger people look at, get some of their twenty, thirty year olds in town.
Yes, and they usually use Instagram and TikTok. Yeah. Um, hospitality training, so. There was this great program of Guest Service Gold. I'm a certified trainer in this, and it's all about hospitality. And we did about two hundred people. Um. Throughout the county and there's. Ken Henson, he was the president of Pelican Brewing or Pelican Pubs. And he's trained more people in the state than anybody else. However. Um, we would get this through Travel Oregon and Oregon Restaurant Lodging Association. But they were the state rep for the National Guest Service Gold, which was the American Hotel. And Lodging Education Institute, A H L E I. They have made it, they have cut off all their connections with the states, and you have to. Have, if you're gonna do a class, you have to have everybody bring their laptop. And you do the class and then they have to sit there and do the test right there online through A H L E I. And you have to pay to become a member of A H L E I, as well as pay a hundred dollars for the test. Which has put a kibosh on a lot of it, unless you're a big hotel, you know, big major hotel. So what we're doing is Ken, we're working with Ken Hanson and my staff member Mariah, who has a. Degree in hospitality, uh, we're putting together a hospitality training program that will be specific to Tillamook County. So we're working on that, we're kinda calling it beyond guest service goal. But we'll use some of the elements in this, and it's really about engaging with customers. Um, how to deal with issues, we do, um.
I think I took that training with you.
Yeah, at N C R D, yes, yes.
I think I still have my certificate is hanging on, on my wall.
Yes, I know that. Anyway, I'm, I'm really looking forward to it, and it would always be free from us. That's something we would always offer, and we can do it a town at a time or group business at a time, whatever, but that's coming up. Um, another wonderful thing that Ken Hanson is an expert in is revenue management. And he could hold some revenue management. Um, because Ken is on the county budget. Um, commission, council. We cannot pay him directly, because he, because we get our money from the county. In fact, they did an audit from him last year to make sure that he hadn't received any money from us in the last year. Which was really weird, so if we did this, this could be something that Rockaway would have to pay directly. To do out of the T L T, um, but, uh, that would be the only hitch, but he is really good and he just. Helps people so much. It could be a series of classes or one day thing or something. Uh, we can do, if you wanna do tour guides, we can do tour guide training, um. I also work with a fellow that taught me to be a tour guide. Uh, he has a degree in, and masters in anthropology, but he's an improv actor. And he, and he does an improv, he's the head of an improv group in Portland, and he's really well known. And he was so good. He teaches you all kinds of body language and things, you know, to do tour guiding and engage people. Uh, he's really good, um, and we can do, um, you know, how to improve your website. What do you need to do to improve that? This thing, um, effective use of A I, I have a bias against A I and I know. Spell check and all that stuff is all A I, but we're, our team is gonna go through some training. About A I, and then we're hoping to teach others to do that, how to use it without plagiarizing, how to use it without. You know, making your, all your content sound like vanilla. You know, it needs to be localized and it needs to be engaging. You can't just copy and paste.
Could, could I suggest one more word for this thing that I hear from businesses? Uh, they have questions about, the little mom and pop places have questions about getting insurance. Because, uh, they have to, you know, that's. Like any kind of insurance on their business or, or for themselves, and also about planning for retirement.
Oh, like a succession plan?
Yeah.
Kind of thing, yeah.
Well, no, them, them planning for retirement, like.
Oh, the personal return.
Yes, I've had several say, well, the, the reason we wanted to buy an S T R. Is so we'd have some retirement income, cause we haven't been able to. Get far enough ahead to, to really build up a retirement. Those are just pretty common things. I hear people talk about the financial aspects of insurance, getting insurance where. Who, who, you know, what kind of an insurance broker would sell insurance to our business and that kind of thing.
Okay.
All right, anything else for, for Nan?
I just, uh, uh, put, put all this into a little bit of context real quick, and we should start off with that. Um, but obviously, uh, uh, the economy was one of the five goal focus areas in our strategic plan. And then the two items Nan talks about are some of the goals under, under the economy section. Um, so we thought we'd invite Nan to see how she could help us, um, pursue some of those goals, since we already had a relationship, uh, with T V C A. So it's, it's a nice easy end. It's not the end of our pursuit of, of the economy goal, but, but it's, it's a good start, I think.
Yeah, yeah, these are great suggestions. Yeah. Um, you know, I've worked with a lot of the towns and the community groups here, so any ideas, I'll, I can, that I think are, that I'll steal them.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, all right, sure.
All right.
No, I appreciate working with you and I, I have to tell you. You're the one town that believes in the businesses and supports them. Oh, you would not believe, some of the stuff I hear about, like, do you ever? I'll, I'll ask a mayor, do you ever go and just talk to the businesses? You know, why would I do that?
Yeah, I'm not gonna test it.
Well, it used to be like that, I bought the hardware store ninety-five.
Oh.
And start to go. And I couldn't spell retail, but I, I wanted to move to the beach and started this, this mom and pop business and. But, uh, it was a true value store, you know, I got a little bit of help from them, but. They actually did me in and, and thanked me, but, but, uh, it was hard. For somebody brand new in retail, uh, and not knowing what to do.
Yeah.
There's some sort of clash, or something I could have taken out.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so I appreciate you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you very much.
Sure.
Sure.
All right, uh, review of draft revisions for city council rules and procedures.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I can start that one off.
Sure. I got stuff for you.
Good, good deal. Uh, so in your packet, you have draft number two. We went over draft number one at our last meeting, last workshop. Uh, and so all of the, the red line from the previous, uh, draft one have been incorporated in the draft two. And all of the, the new items you all brought up at the last meeting are now redlined in this version. And we can go through it however you want, um, I'd be happy to go through the, the changes, um, we can open it up, the comments. Um, to, up to you all.
Let's go page by page.
Yeah, I think that's what we did last time, wasn't it?
All right. Any comments on page one? So, okay, good. How about page two?
Right. Uh, well, well, later on, when we talk about, uh, notices about, um, speaking of, I should say two dot, three dot C. Uh, on page two, we talk about, this one says written notice shall be posted at city hall and the post office. Other areas where we're talking about noticing, we mentioned the city's website and Facebook page and sent out through the city's. Uh, listserv email listing, uh, would we do all of those when we do a special meeting? And if we would, we should call that out here. So I suggest adding, uh, changing it written notice shall be posted at city hall, comma, cross off, and. And then say the post office, and then say the city's website and Facebook page. And sent out through the city's listserv email listing, and I just lifted that from another area where we talked about noticing. That's all I got for page two.
Page three.
No, you go right ahead.
No, if you've got something, go ahead.
I do.
Okay, all right, um, so, all right.
You're enthusiastic.
Uh, two dot, five dot D, um, uh, this is all about, um, uh, each person shall prior to giving testimony. Um, and it was redlined to state their name and shall indicate whether they are resident of the city. Um, uh, I suggest we reword that to read. Each person shall prior to giving testimony, state their name and shall indicate in which city is their principal residence.
Hmm.
So if the principal residence is in.
Yeah, that reads better.
And, and they can tell us what it is, and then I would suggest speakers may indicate if they own a business within the city. I like that a lot, but I would add, speakers may indicate if they own property or a business in the city.
If they have a business, but live in Wheeler or something like that.
But knowing that they have a business here tells us something about.
They have a home here, but it's not their primary.
That's why I say property or a business is just my suggestion. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
There we go, okay, all right.
What about page four? Comments on page four?
I have a question. Okay, I take the document very seriously. Um, this is number two, um. Uh, it reads members of the council shall reveal any ex parte contacts with regard. To the proceedings at the commencement of any quasi judicial land use proceeding burden of proof. And then it says the proponent has the burden of proof on all elements of the proposal. And the proposal must be supported by proof that it confronts, conforms to all applicable standards and criteria. I didn't understand that, that, that second sentence and how it connects to the first sentence.
I had a big question mark over my head when I read that.
Well, I think that's state law. So, so, so state law tells us how we have to do a quasi hearing?
Maybe some missing punctuation as well.
Okay.
Anyways, I mean, I, 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 I understand that and I know the ex parte thing, but, but when it said the proponent, who is the proponent? Who is that referring to?
So where, um, where are we looking at here?
So I, I, number two.
So quasi judicial land use.
I took proponent to be the applicant.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
That's what I get.
And how does the applicant have to do with the ex parte revelations? Uh, anyways, it just, I didn't understand it.
So maybe it should be in two different sections, is that what you're saying?
I, I, I just, you know, wanted to be clear, so when somebody reads it, they know what, what, what the expectations are, more layman's.
No, we could, we can look at the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I see what you mean, it, it's, it's two completely different thoughts, and so it should be.
They don't hang together.
No, they could be in two separate, uh, sections.
Thank you.
Anybody else on page four? Well, page five. Going once, okay.
So if you go to three dot two, which is on page eight. It states the council has an obligation to the citizens to be clear and simple in its procedures. So if you go back here, we have two separate time limits for, for comments, and I think having two separate comments is not simple and clear. So I recommend that we change all timelines to four minutes. And so all the threes become four, and that becomes our standard and everybody knows it.
All the fives become four.
I don't think we have any fives left in here. Well, we do, I'm happy to put those to four too.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think they, they just, we, uh, uh, if the council agrees, we, we set. We continue to use four as our standard, which we decided on two years ago, thanks to your wonderful compromise. And, uh.
This is something we discussed at last meeting, so I guess I thought we already agreed on, I mean, we had. Um. I have no issues.
Your show ends how everybody feels.
Which, which one are you on right now?
Page five.
Page five.
But he was, in support of his argument, he was using the simple thing.
So are you, everybody okay with, raise your hand if four is okay?
Excuse me.
That's what we did the last time.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I, I, if you have ten people, that's forty minutes. Talking.
Well, the presiding officer at the meeting would have to manage that, so sometimes what, uh, what the presiding officer would do is. Have them group together and pick a person, so yes. You, uh, you, you do have to manage the total length of time, you can also ask the council to, to vote on extending the length of time. So yes, there's time management here, but I, I'm going with the. I, I'm going with the clear and simple. So everybody knows when they come to the meeting, they get four minutes.
What's?
No, I guess about two hands up, three hands up maybe.
But I don't like it.
Why, why are we going from three to four?
That's my question.
Well, why can't we make a free standard?
Uh, I don't want to back up. I, I want five. But I didn't get five two years ago, and I certainly don't want the council to go back to three. That sends a message to the community. We don't want to listen to them. And it's our obligation as counselors and mayor to listen to the residents, the voters, because they're our boss.
And some residents have expressed issue with some of the shorter times.
So we may be not. We're still talking about a hearing here. We're not talking about like. Uh, I guess with the difference between three and four, we're talking about. A, a land, a land use hearing. And, and that, I don't want that to be confused with, uh, general comments that they make at a city council meeting. I guess that's why I'm like, why do they all have to be the same? Cause they're.
To make it clear and simple. So when people come and they're going to make comments, they know they get four minutes. And, and I, and I've had the same comment from residents. They go, why is it three here and four here?
Well, I think they've even said it at the meetings.
Also, Mark time, would, would you have an opinion?
Firstly, a lot of people were even done before the three minutes are up. But then other people have a ton of things they want to say, so. I'm game either way. If you can offer them four, and maybe they'll be done in three.
What about Councilor Conroy?
I don't know. Three, three minutes does seem. I, I like kind of streamlining a part because we don't have any five minute limits, correct? But we have three minutes and we have four minutes. That's it.
Three minutes for your general public comment, agenda, non-agenda items. And all the various types of public hearings are, are four, four minutes or.
No, he's looking at it's four and three.
Four and three, yeah, yeah. So the public hearing a little, one minute shorter.
I mean, I, I guess I kind of like the idea of giving, I mean. Giving the public an opportunity. Three minutes is. Not a lot of time to say something. And maybe they won't take the whole four minutes. But I feel like. We're kind of splitting hairs over sixty seconds right now. And I feel like if sixty seconds is, is what's going to appease the public to really feel like they can get out, I mean. I don't see an issue with a four minute limit.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it's your meeting rules. So it, it sounds like, uh, Council, Council Marton, you, you could go either way. Counselor Chief likes three. Counselor McGinnis?
I, well, I, but this is only for, I'm, what we're looking at changing is for the public hearing.
Yes.
Uh, uh, on an appeals case on land use. And, uh, I, but over the past years, I've attended some of those here in Rockaway where. There were large crowds who spoke for a long period of time. And yes, I did. See a former mayor wants to say they had to be grouped together and pick one spokesperson and. They are all charged up to speak. It said, we're not doing that. And, and nobody was going to arrest them, so, so they didn't do it. Um. So I, I, I guess I'm thinking of what happens if there are twenty people there. That want to speak, then the difference between sixty minutes and eighty minutes. Oh, well, I guess it's not that big a deal. Um, I could go with four.
All right. Well, again, so we can, we can make the change. It's just a draft.
Yeah.
Let's go up, up for a vote downstairs, uh, in the coming months.
I mean, I just feel like if one minute is, is gonna make the public feel more heard. I mean. It's, it's sixty seconds, you know, we, we are here to hear the public.
And that's on five and page six, page five and page six.
All right. Any other comments on page, uh, six? Any comments on page six?
Nothing, Charles?
I already mentioned the four minutes.
Okay, uh, page seven.
So on, um, up at the six reopening hearing. Um, uh, this was another, I just didn't quite understand this. It says reopening hearing. Prior to second reading of an ordinance relating to a legislative land use matter. And upon majority of a hearing may be reopened to receive additional testimony, evidence or argument. So are we doing? I guess I just didn't understand what that, what that meant.
Which page are you?
Page seven.
Number six.
Number six, page seven, number six up at the top.
Well, Ginn is still talking about. Uh, a land use hearing, which by the time it comes to city council, it's an appeal. That's the only time we hear it.
It, it, this includes a legislative land use matter, so, um. It, it could also be a co-change that where you are just.
Oh, legislative land use matter, okay. Okay, okay, that starts to make more sense. Thank you. Yeah, please.
It's basically giving you the option to, um, to reopen a hearing. So you could, if, if, for example, you ended up, um, doing the first reading one month. Decided to wait until the second month for a second reading, if you wanted to open.
Oh, okay.
To have another hearing.
Okay.
So even though one is only required, it's typically.
Perfect.
One drink.
I'm good, yeah. Thank you. Um, okay, down under, um, executive sessions, um, we list off all the ways we send out notice and I would just add in. Um, uh, Facebook page. There. And then, um, uh, the workshop section, um, I, I, I see that, uh, you redlined, um, two eleven C to say. Workshops are typically held at least once a month and on the second Wednesday at four thirty P M. Um, I'd like to propose that we be more definitive about that. And we say something like, uh, under workshops are permitted to present information to the council. So that the council is prepared for regular special meetings, workshops shall be held at least once each month. On the second Wednesday at four thirty P M within the city of Rockaway Beach. We, we stipulate it just like we stipulate the council meeting. I think these have been hugely beneficial, um, to our, our council and our, our governing body. And so I would really like to make them.
So where it says are typically held.
We get rid of that.
Too ambiguous and, and we'd like to have it definitive.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would strike two dot eleven dot C, change two dot eleven dot D to C and then. Put in what I suggested.
So I don't disagree with that, that, um, but from my past life, if you, um. I know we say it's the second Wednesday, but there are times when it's not. So there needs to be, um. E- e- either for a council meeting or for this, there needs to be. With a room, I would imagine.
Like we did in January where we moved.
Yeah, just in the language. So I agree typically to, to maybe.
Well, and I don't know, uh, what, um, I mean, do we need in the rules here, something about that we can change the meaning?
Yeah, and I, I think that's, that's an authority you're, you already have.
Yeah, we just.
And I think the discussion last time. Was, was to put in some time, but leave the door open because. Sometimes we may have a bigger meeting and maybe we want to hold on a different day.
So is that covered in a different section?
December, we might not. Some December, we might not have a workshop, you know, I, I don't know. I just wanted to leave the, leave the door open.
Don't want to make it too ironclad.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I would argue that we can do that. And make it ironclad, tie it to our council meetings. It's really important for the governing body. And then we can make a decision like we do already to move things around and not have things.
So, so what you're suggesting is, uh, citizens, workshops are typically held, say workshops will be held.
Yeah, I mean, we can move, but at least once a month on the second Wednesday at four thirty P M within the city of Rockaway Beach, same.
I, I, actually, I like that because I agree that if, just thinking. Down the road, uh, who, whoever else might be looking at this and making, and trying to interpret it, um. I, I, I think we should stipulate that workshops will be held.
So we're taking out the word typically?
Yeah, workshops are held.
At least once each month on the second Wednesday at four thirty P M within the city of Rockaway.
I, I think they're just, our workshops like we're doing now have become absolutely. Essential for us to understand what we're voting on. So I would say will be held.
Uh huh, yeah. What's the difference between will be and are? About splitting hairs.
Uh huh. Will.
Yeah, shall.
Shall be held, yeah.
There we go.
That's the legal.
Well, that's what it says up here under the second sentence under two dot eleven. I said, suggested adding the wording. It says workshop shall be held. Right now it says as needed, and I'm suggesting it shall be held at least once a month on the da, 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 to gather information, da, da, da. So we would, we would get that shall be held word of.
Good line.
Page eight.
Well, didn't we talk about that?
No, I have.
Comments on pages?
Yeah, the, on three dot three. Towards the end of the paragraph, it says the council may discuss items added by a council member at the meeting. Nowhere in here do I see how that process happens.
No, I, and I remember last month, we, we discussed taking that out. Because that is a holdover from before we had workshops. When we had to make those kind of decisions impromptu at the city council meeting.
In the old days, we hardly ever had a workshop.
Yeah, so, so that's just a holdover from before we had our workshop.
Well, I would support taking out that sentence.
Yeah, yeah, we, we discussed that last month.
So the council may discuss items added by a council member at the meeting. We're gonna, we're gonna, um, take that out. Thank you.
And, and, you know, obviously our staff needs time to. To research whatever we might want to add.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and there, there, there might be a kind of a dual intent with that line. Perhaps. Kind of caution the council against making any decision on a matter that was added at the last minute as well. Anyway, but, uh. Yeah, yeah, we can, we can remove that, I think. I think that's the right thing to do. All right, any other comments on page eight? Page nine, you can see we added, uh, some clarity on, on, uh, the opportunity for public comment for the old business.
Um, up under three dot four. Um, there's a phrase such as the approval of the order of business on the agenda. As part of a consent agenda, would we be ever approving the order of business on the agenda?
Well, it might be a possibility if you wanted to change the order of business, but yeah. That's the only thing that comes to mind.
And what would be the mechanics? The, somebody would throw out a motion asking to change the order and we'd vote on it and. It would all happen during a consent agenda?
You know, there was a couple of months ago, we changed the order and something that was further down the agenda, we brought it up to the very first thing. And that was, um. Um, our. Vote on, uh, on the Donna P U D.
Yeah, yeah.
So we do change the order sometimes.
That, that's okay. I just thought it was sort of an odd thing for the consent agenda. It's not, I, I don't have a. Uh, an axe to grind, but then, um, under, at the, at the last, it says. Adoption of the content agenda shall be by the affirmative vote. Um, we don't, do we need to say roll call or is affirmative vote? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Page ten is next. Anyone?
Got nothing.
Okay.
Doc?
Continuing to page eleven?
Got nothing.
Oh, wow. I'm checking right through.
Were you stapled together?
Page twelve, we have another instance of, uh, uh. Place of revenue, uh, residence versus a removal of address.
Could we just insert the same wording that we?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was the one thing that I kind of flagged on this is I feel like we're getting. I'd like to see it cleaned up all the way across and read the same.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, three dot ten. Um, dot A. Um, third sentence is the first period for public comment should be allowed during the scheduled business items placed on the agenda. Um, and the second period of public comment should be used to comment on any issues of city business other than, isn't it the opposite? Don't we do? So that needs to just be flipped.
So, three, ten, A.
Yeah. I got a nod from our city recorder, so, um, I don't think we need to, um. And then members of the public may speak about any topic during the last period of public comment. Isn't it the first period of public comment? That's three, ten, C.
Good.
And then, um, uh, three, ten, F. I would like to add, um, to that paragraph, um, after the second sentence. Mayor can change the order of speakers at his discretion.
Yeah, I looked at that and I'm not sure what order of speakers means. Does that mean like as they wrote their name down on the signup sheet or?
Wouldn't it be their discretion though? It already says generally the speakers will be called upon in the order in which they have signed in on the signup sheet. It doesn't say they shall be.
Okay, I just, I change it. I just want everybody to know that I sometimes change up the order to try to create a better ambiance in the room.
Knew it.
And you're the only one that sees what's on the sheet.
I'm the only one that sees what's on the sheet. So I don't want to be breaking some rule. But if, if what Counselor Frank says generally. Gives me the discretion to do that, I'm happy to not necessarily call it out, but you all need to know that I sometimes will.
Generally, it doesn't say shall. Shall is your, you can't do it any other way word.
Yeah. Is that, is that something the council wants to give the mayor authority to do?
He's doing it anyways.
I see no problem with it. It's your tennis.
He just admitted.
I'm, I'm coming clean here for the council.
Well, you have different personalities getting up there. You don't want them back to back.
Uh, it's, it's very helpful to the, the general flow and tone of the meeting to, I don't do it a lot. I mean, I've done it less than five times, just also to be clear. I just typically just follow what they sign up, but. In the fall, there was some contentious things going on at our meetings and I tried to help. Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I, I'm, I'm good with that, but I thought.
I, I, I think it'd be worth, like, fun.
Okay, so. So something like mayor can change the order of speakers at his discretion.
But wouldn't it be at there, like you wouldn't want to say his discretion because moving forward, we may not have. But wouldn't it be at there, like you wouldn't want to say his discretion, because moving forward, we may not have a male.
He said there.
Oh, oh, I see, uh uh at their discretion, thank you.
No, he's saying at his discretion.
You're right, I was, I was imposing my. Oh, maybe I said it both ways.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't say his discretion.
Absolutely.
It would be at their discretion.
Thank you.
Then on page thirteen at the top, we have another one of those situations that needs to be standardized about uh. Not stating the exact address.
Yeah, place of principal residence, speakers may indicate that if they don't, okay, yeah, good.
Any other comments on page thirteen?
No.
We'll split that words.
No, I'm done, actually, that was everything.
All right, well, page fourteen, any anybody else? Comments on fourteen? We did clean up the language on on uh ad hoc advisory committees, uh clarified uh uh how we'll follow meetings rules, uh but also left it open to council to uh set any other rules for committees uh through resolution. Should we all see the fit?
So I I do have one, state law does not require the planning commission. Uh, it says that it is the only one by state laws to budget commission, planning commissions are optional. Um. All the state law says is if you choose to have a planning commission, this is how you have to set one up. So that language in three sixteen, three point sixteen point B needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, let's, let us take a look at one. Any other comments on fourteen? And then fifteen, uh so pretty much the the entire section for filling city council vacancy. Uh, major, major overhaul, um but in general, uh kind of tidying up the process. Um. Uh. Adding in the specific questions for the application process. Uh, number one, why are you interested in applying to serve on the city council, and two, do you have any experience serving on on city boards, committees or commissions, these are questions we've asked uh during the last uh council, filling the last council vacancy.
Um, I I I want to just say something, going back to clarify about on page fourteen about the planning commission. The planning commission itself is not required by state law, but we have by in our. We voted, so the previous governing body voted in their uh a comprehensive plan to make the planning commission our citizens involvement committee. The citizens involvement committee is required by state law. And we have also voted, we have an ordinance where we have voted to make the uh the planning commission our hearing board for land use, and the hearing board is required by state law, so two of their three roles. But the planning commission, anyway, you guys clean it off.
This just to, just to, oh, if I could just add, um, this is the process that we followed when we selected Alicia Franken to be councillor Franken.
I remember it.
And I I believe it worked very well for us, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it looks like a good process. Screening, interview, voting, it's all covered. Um. Really, it's a nice.
Well, you know, I tried to throw in the word calling, but.
Oh, yeah, that's.
It was taken out.
So, as I've talked to, this is, I think we're a lot years ahead of most of our um neighboring communities. Because as I've talked to them about how they fill vacancies, they say they just basically have a sentence like we used to, that says uh this um city council will fill vacancies in the council, and so by us going and describing the process, we're uh we're cutting it. Around here.
And then I think the last page here seventeen, any comments?
Okay, look good. Right, uh we're sitting at um uh uh five forty eight. You want to spend a couple of minutes, uh was there any, anything people, anybody wanted to share about the Seminary Trail?
This is something that uh I'll bring up later, but I have concerns about splitting it. Uh, and for safety reasons, because it'll be like half the width of the trail on either side, and it splits right at Third Street. And it splits where it's the busiest in the seat, in the city, and uh so I have worked with uh city manager and city recorder uh at an amended motion that will uh approve the whole thing, because we need to prove the whole thing to get moving with funding and stuff like that, but the amended motion will uh direct the city staff to continue looking for alternatives to splitting it. And and working with the Santa Berry Trail on that. So that that's a real safety concern to me.
I I I happen to agree, and I've heard it from other members of the community, concerned about what what will happen right there with the split.
One, one day last summer, my sister was visiting, she probably won't like me saying that, so a person was visiting me. And um and we came and 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 like the last train, we were at the wayside. And there were so many people lined up there to get onto the train, and and because it was the last train. They were like circled around the wayside in a single file waiting to get on, and she just stopped and she said, are we supposed to be evacuating? And I've thought of that image of that, of those people circled around the wayside, and I'm like, yeah, I don't know if that's a place to split the trail, you know?
Yeah, that that was my only. As I went through everything.
Yeah, so councillor McGinnis did did raise that concern of hers with me. And so I suggested that she uh make a motion to amend the resolution. And then if that's successful, uh vote to adopt the amended resolution. So that that's the process she'll likely be pursuing with the all downstairs.
So, yeah, I plan to pause after public comment. Where there is any and and look at. Councillor McGinnis, give her a chance to make her motion before I call for a motion, and then we'll go through the uh seconding and voting on that, if it passes, then I will ask for a motion, and I'll throw in the word amended to the, to it, to reflect.
Where it is.
Um, yeah.
As I was reading this, it reminded me of Sun River, if you've ever stayed at Sun River. Where you just take your bicycle out of the truck and you don't use the truck, the rest of the time you go to all the restaurants.
We get to that place here, oh my, yeah.
All right, um uh may, are we, are we good, uh or any, anything else for the good of the order? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, it's moved and seconded, let's vote. Uh councillor President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Franken.
Yes.
Councillor Conrath.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Uh, we are adjourned at five fifty two on Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty five.